In order for Wednesday, November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Roll call, Superintendent.
Mr. Begoli, President.
President.
Mr. Gattuso, President.
President.
Mrs. Lebo.
President.
Mrs. Parrios.
President.
Mayor Koch.
And Quincy High School Student Representative, Anna Ballachin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Superintendent in memoriam.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have five memoriams. Please keep in your thoughts and prayers the following individuals who are retirees of the Quincy Public Schools and their families. The first is Charles Bellagion, Quincy High School CVTE teacher for thirty-seven years. Next is Angela Carroll, Secretary for the Quincy Public Schools for twenty-seven years. Christine Carrasca, Guidance Counselor at Snug Harbor Community School for thirty years. Helene King, Elementary School Teacher for thirty-five years. And Joanne Sheridan, Elementary and Middle School Teacher for twenty years. Again, if you could keep these individuals and their families in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Now is the time for open forum, which is an opportunity for community input regarding the Quincy Public Schools. Community in this context is defined as a resident of the city of Quincy, a non-resident parent of a student who attends the Quincy Public Schools, or a non-resident employee of the Quincy Public Schools. After giving his or her name and address, each speaker may make a presentation of no more than three minutes to the school committee. An individual may not exchange their time or yield to others. Residents or non-community persons may submit written statements of up to three hundred words to the school committee at QSC Open Forum at quinsypublicschools.com by four P. M. of the day prior to the posted school committee regular meeting. Written statements will be posted on the school committee section of the Quincy Public Schools website by noon on the day of the posted school committee regular meeting. Do we have anyone here for open forum? No? Any letters for open forum?
There is none.
There is none. Okay, thank you. And we'll move on to the Superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, and good evening again, everyone. Hope everyone is doing well. First on the agenda is student recognitions, the John and Abigail Adams Scholars. Congratulations to the two hundred and twelve graduating seniors in the class of two thousand and twenty-five who have been awarded the John and Abigail Adams Scholarships for scoring in the top twenty-five percent district-wide on the MCAS assessments. An impressive feat. The scholarship covers eight semesters of tuition at any University of Massachusetts State, university, or community college campus. Again, congratulations to those two hundred and twelve students, very impressive. Congratulations to the Quincy High School History Bowl Team. On Saturday, November ninth, Quincy High School's History Bowl Team won first place at the Greater Boston History Bowl Varsity Championships. Quincy High School fielded two teams, Team A and Team B, and both made it to the playoffs. And there was a historic Quincy A versus Quincy B matchup, if you can believe it. A did prevail. Both the A team and the B team qualified for the national competition in Washington, D. C. this April, and the A team re-qualified for the International History Olympiad in Paris this summer, so very impressive.
Nice.
Yeah. Congratulations to the History Bowl Teams, A and B. We can try and work something out. Next, I'm pleased to announce that the new QPS Digital Communications Coordinator, Catherine Katie Delaney, started in mid-October and has already been busy with sharing academic, athletic, and extracurricular highlights on social media and continuing the design, refresh, reorganization of the QPS website. Katie has an extensive background in website development and social media and higher education and healthcare, most recently at Boston University. So again, welcome Katie to the team. Thanks to Commissioner Paul Hines and the Public Buildings Department for securing grants for energy-efficient lighting for Lincoln Hancock Community School. The cost estimate to replace several hundred light fixtures is one hundred and seventy thousand dollars, but a national grid incentive of seventy-five thousand dollars and agreeing community's grant of ninety thousand dollars reduces the city's cost to just five thousand dollars, which is great. The work will be completed outside of school hours during the months of November and December. Again, thank you to Commissioner Hines and his team. In light of the outcome of last week's state ballot question, too, it is anticipated that the grade ten MCAS may no longer be a high school graduation requirement. We are awaiting guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on the timeline and implementation of this, but in the meantime, the scheduled MCAS retests are underway for students in grade eleven and twelve who had not yet achieved a passing grade on one or more of the tests. We hope to get guidance from the state as to how this will roll out shortly, and as soon as we do, I'll certainly update the committee. Next is upcoming Quincy Public Schools and City of Quincy events, and they include a lot, a lot of activity in the next month or so. Quincy High School Drama is presenting Ruth Gordon's autobiographical play Years Ago on Friday, November fifteenth at seven thirty P. M., Saturday, November sixteenth at two P. M., and seven thirty P. M., and Sunday, November seventeenth at two P. M. The play recalls the actress's senior year at Quincy High School when she decided to follow her dreams. So I could, I would encourage everyone that can attend to please attend those, this play. It looks to be very, very, very good. On Thanksgiving morning, the North Quincy and Quincy High School football teams will meet for the annual competition. Kickoff is at ten A. M. at Veterans Memorial Stadium. The winter holiday season officially begins in Quincy the next day, with a weekend of events capped off by the Seventy-First Annual Christmas Parade on Sunday, December first, beginning at noon in Quincy Center and featuring floats and local marching bands, including our own Quincy, North Quincy Marching Band in Collagard. On December fifth, at, from five P. M. to seven P. M., Quincy and North Quincy High School Photography Students will be hosting the annual Holiday Art Show in Seale to benefit Boston's Children's Hospital at Quincy High School. In the spirit of the holiday season, Mayor Koch and the Quincy School Community Partnership are once again sponsoring 'Tis the Season Symphony and Song on December fifth at seven P. M. in the Quincy High School Auditorium. The concert features the Quincy Symphony Orchestra under the direction of Yorichi Utagawa and performances from QPS student musicians and the John Adams Orchestra and the Combined High School Choral Group. Again, it's a great event, and I hope anyone that can attend will attend. Thanks to Granite Telecommunications for their tremendous support of Quincy Public Schools, one of our great partners in the city of Quincy, most recently through their plan to display Quincy Public Schools student artwork at their new headquarters at One Heritage Drive. When the QPS student artwork exhibit at the Q Arts Gallery ended on October twelfth, the panels from each school were moved to the new location on Heritage Drive. Granite Telecommunications has planned a reception for the student artists and their families on Saturday, December seventh, from eleven A. M. to one P. M., featuring local food trucks, and is also giving away art supplies to our young artists. So thank you to our great partner, Granite Telecommunications. Quincy Public Schools is presenting a parent academy for parents and guardians of students in kindergarten through grade two, supporting your children's literacy development. This parent academy will be held on Tuesday, December tenth, from six P. M. to seven P. M. on Zoom, and also recorded for families who are unable to attend during the scheduled time, and of course, that will be posted on our QPS website for their access. North Quincy High School's Drama Club is presenting Little Women on December thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth in the Peter Crism Auditorium at North Quincy High School. And two more. Elementary, middle, and high school parents will have the opportunity to attend Report Card conferences beginning this week and continuing up to the holiday break. These conferences are an excellent opportunity to meet with your students, teachers, and gain insight into their academic successes and challenges, and of course, I urge parents to take advantage of this great opportunity. And lastly, winter concerts are being scheduled for all schools, some in December and others in January after the return from winter break. A complete schedule will be shared on the Quincy Public Schools website and social media in the coming weeks. So with that, that concludes my Superintendent's report.
Thank you. And next, we move to new business. First presentation is the Squanam Elementary School Project Update. Commissioner Hines and Mr. LaRoche and Tina. What's your last name?
Sue.
Tina Sue. Sue. Is, is Paul Hines?
I, he's not here tonight.
Okay. Can you check your microphone? Is that, do they have the right one? Tap on it. No. Okay, hold on.
There you go.
Yep.
There you go. Thank you.
All right, great. Well, thank you very much. Excited to be here, Brian LaRoche. I am with PCA three sixty, the owners' project management firm for the Squanam School Project. With me tonight is Tom Kerwin, who's also with PCA three sixty. Our team is extensive on the Squanam Elementary School Project, and I also have with me tonight presenting Arrow Street Architects, Tina Soho, which you just were introduced to, and Larry Spang. They've been very integral. And Autumn, who's been a very, a big part of our design team, too, Autumn Waldron. So I'd be remiss if I didn't mention her name. She's been tremendous help, too. Other is the School Building Committee. We have Paul Hines, who's not only the Commissioner of Public Buildings, he's also the Chair of the Committee. And then the Committee members are Mayor Koch, Superintendent Mulvey, Assistant Superintendent Perkins, Principal Steven Sylvia. Tina Cahill is our School Committee Rep, is on the Committee as well. Walter McDonald, the Public Buildings Department. And Eric Mason, Director of Municipal Finance. Catherine Logan, Purchasing Agent. Frank Santoro, who is acting as a member of the community with school-building experience. And we have two Squanam School Parents, Susan Vinitsky and Kim Wilright. And majority of this group meets at times weekly and at times bi-weekly. It's been almost two years of time that we've been working on the project. We now have a new group that we'd like to introduce tonight, representing Lee Kennedy. Our construction manager is Brian Singh. We just recently brought Lee Kennedy on to the team. We're super excited to have them as the construction manager for the school. We had gone through an extensive process to find a construction manager for the project, and we feel like we found a really good partner with Lee Kennedy, so we're excited to begin working with them on the project as we move forward. Another group that we have is Granite City Partners. They've been assisting on the project. There's a lot of municipal infrastructure work that's going on around the school in support of the project that's about to come soon. Joe Shea Jr. with Granite City Partners has been a great help, too, to our team. So I believe with that, we'll move on. So we wanted to take this opportunity, just to reiterate the success that the city has had with the MSBA and the core school program. Squanam Elementary is going to be the fourth core project with the Mass School Building Authority, so it's pretty amazing. And then, you know, beginning with Quincy High School back in two thousand and ten, Central Middle School in two thousand and fourteen, and Southwest Middle School in two thousand and nineteen. Other projects the city has been working with and collaborating with the MSBA and the Public Buildings Department has been working on all of these projects, over nine projects now, several that are already in, are still in progress this year. Amazing that the city has been able to partner with the MSBA in so many great projects. With that, I just want to tell you a little bit of the overview of where we are in the MSBA process. The MSBA is a grant- awarding authority. They have a very prescriptive process that we go through, which began in April of two thousand and twenty-one, when the Board of Directors voted to accept the project into their program. And then in May twenty-two, the city and the MSBA entered into what we call a feasibility study agreement, and that's allowed for the team to be brought together. So PCA three sixty was hired in January of twenty-three, and then Arrow Street shortly thereafter in May. So that rounded out the, the process in the beginning of forming the team, and then we went all of twenty-three and into twenty-four, completing the feasibility phase and culminating with the schematic design. So that submission was sent to the MSBA, and then the Board of Directors on October thirtieth approved the project to move forward with the full design, allowing for the City Council to then go ahead with their appropriations. So this group, last night, we presented to the City Council, and the motion was introduced to the Council for the full appropriation for the project. The City Council then referred it to their Finance Committee, and then it will appear before the full Council again on the second of December. And then with that, we'll be able to enter into the project funding agreement with the MSBA, and we expect that we'll have that complete at the end of this year. The design team has been working at the same time and parallel with us working through this process for approving the project with the state. They have continued with the design development phase. That way, we're not losing any time while we wait for some of these agreements to take place. So the design development phase is nearing the end. Just about a week ago, Arrow Street issued a review set of drawings, which is now being priced by Arrow Street's estimator, as well as our new construction manager that's on the team. We're having them price it as well, just as a check to make sure that the budget and estimates we had previously still stand. So far, so good with the market. Bidding seems to be pretty favorable on some of the projects we have going on, so we're hopeful. But as we move through the design process, we are continuing to check to make sure that everything is where it should be. So that will be happening over the next few weeks, and we will finish the design development phase at the end of the month, and we will formally submit that to the MSBA. And then January, when we return from break, construction document phase begins, and the design team will be working feverishly to get us to bidding, which is going to happen in the summer and, you know, into the fall, when we'll make the awards and the full project will go. So on the project timeline, I have, before you, I have construction start shown in the spring. Our intention is to start an early enablement phase on the project to prepare the site and the school property in advance of the students leaving, so we'll be doing some things in the field, geothermal wellwork, and we're going to get into a little bit more of the sequencing later in the presentation. But the full new construction, the actual foundation for the new school, won't start until the fall of two thousand and twenty-five. There's a lot of work that has to be done in advance before that happens. So just a quick overview of some of the work that has already occurred to prepare for the project. The city has undergone some infrastructure work that has begun. New drainage was put in, in the paper street behind the school, which is known as Winslow Road. That is to relieve, or alleviate, rather, any drainage issues that had been occurring in the past. Water at the low end of Mayflower and Winslow has been a problem, and this new eighteen-inch storm drain line now is connected to Dorchester Bay all the way. So they put all new infrastructure to make sure that the future development work of the site will not be an issue. Other things are water main upgrades. We're completing Huckins, and we also have, at the moment, sewer lining going on around the streets that bound the school. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Arrow Street to present the design of where we stand right now.
Thank you, Brian. I guess, do you want me to advance this?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, just the arrow.
Thank you for having us tonight. Let's see. So what you see in front of you is a site which you're all very familiar with, but we wanted to bring it up again for, for the public, just to make sure that they understand in terms of the school site. It's dashed in red, and right behind it is the park, which will remain as park, is protected by Article ninety-seven. We are doing, we are planning on some enhancements that are integral as part of the design with the Squanam School, and you'll see that on the following slides. So what you see here is an illustrative of the site plan where it's showing this new school in terms of the footprint and where it stands in the existing school site. There will be, as Brian had mentioned, there's some phasing that would happen in order for us to accomplish this, to allow the new school to be built, while a portion of the existing school will remain occupied. What you also start to see here is in the park, where some of that improvement, enhancement will occur as part of the design of the school. Over the past few months, since we had last presented to you over the summer, we're continuing conversations with, with the principal, with the staff, with the city, and various departments of the city to fine-tune the, the planning of the building, the overall floor, floor plan, and the programming has remained the same in terms of classrooms, the number of classrooms, as well as other spaces such as gym, cafeteria, and library. Those are continuing to, to be fine-tuned and developed even as we go into construction documents, as we begin to detail some of those in, in the presentation later on. We have some renderings of those interior spaces to share with you. We continue refining the second floor as well, which is the majority mainly consisting of, of classrooms and as well as some administrative offices. And this is a lower level. There is a little small portion of, of the building where it consists of mechanical spaces as well as custodial and storage. Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Larry to talk about.
Sure, we'll talk about the outside, and, and good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for having us. It's been a pleasure working with many of you over the last, I can't believe it's almost two years, but.
Almost two years.
Time flies. In any event, we're excited by the opportunity to modernize the school, but at the same time, respect the heritage of the existing school as well as the Squanam community. So as you see in this image, which is looking at the main entrance from Huckins Ave, we are doing our best to preserve the nineteen nineteen facade of the original school, and what we will do is repurpose that from today's use as classrooms into the media center or library, as most of us think about it, and really create an interesting and exciting place, both for the students but as well as for the community. And then the goal is that the building itself, although it is about sixty percent larger than the existing school, or series of school buildings, that it really is trying to be scaled down and fit comfortably, both on a reasonably tight site, but certainly in an important community. And as you'll see here, we've taken our cues from the buildings around the Squanam community, seaside locations. This is the side entrance, as Tina mentioned, the sort of parking and bus drop area, which is between Huckins and Winslow on the east side of the building. And again, trying to keep the building small and well-scaled, and I think it works both for the community but also for the students and the children who are coming in, and we like the idea that it feels like a welcoming place. On the other side, this is the view from Mayflower, looking up the road to Winslow on the left there. And again, these are kindergarten rooms with upper grades above, and again, trying to scale the building, make it feel like a comfortable residential, more so than a large-scale school. So we're trying very carefully to do that as we go and working, this is the view from the other side, from the corner of Huckins and Mayflower, try to keep some efficiencies in the project, make sure the building materials are durable and cost-effective, and at the same time, make it feel like part of the community. So we appreciate everybody's input that we've been getting on that, and we think it's going to be a, heading in the right direction, a nice feel and look to the building. Oops, sorry. That jumped really fast. This is the, what's, you might think of as the rear entrance, but it's the north-facing entrance towards the park, towards Winslow. We have a drawing, I think we have a drawing of the circulation, basically taking the parent drop-off and moving it to Winslow Road, and the goal there is to take the parents and the traffic that that creates off of Huckins and move it to the back of the building, and then provide a nice welcoming entrance, which will essentially be for students as well as the community for after-hours and weekends. Most of the time during the day, these would be locked and visitors directed around to the Huckins Street entrance where they, the main office is, and they can sign in and get checked in and do those sorts of things.
Can you mention about the siding? It's not wood, just?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So one thing we've been working on is this, it looks like old chingles, but it's actually terracotta material. So it's a fired clay, and it's a real interesting use of, you have, may have seen those around for roof shingles for years, and the company Ludoichi, who's been around for, I think, a hundred-plus years, has developed these sort of vertical wall shingles, and we think it adds a nice texture to the building, makes it look nice and feel like it's part of the seaside community, but also is more durable than the old-fashioned cedar shingles, which you can imagine don't last nearly as long, and ironically, is more cost-effective than some other materials that we have looked at. A little more expensive than the brick, but not as expensive ironically as the metal panel, which for years was sort of the go-to inexpensive material. So that's been a nice revelation, and we think a nice contribution to the building. On the inside, we think it's going to create some wonderful spaces. This is a view as if you had just walked in the front door of the building off of Huckins. Ahead of you is the outdoor courtyard, which was immediately behind the nineteen nineteen building, and we've been working with the district to think about how that can become an outdoor classroom, a space where students can learn but still be sort of enclosed and secure. But as we hope you can see in this drawing, it becomes a really nice way of moving through the building, the cafeteria to your right, the library to your left. This is a view moving down that same hallway that we were looking at a moment ago. At the other end, there's a main stair that will take us up to the second floor and trying to build in some benches and other things to, to have a sort of casual seating area near the cafeteria, near the rear entrance, and near the gym, but in ways that encourage students to feel like they have a home. I mentioned the library, or, excuse me, the nineteen nineteen building is being repurposed into becoming the library. This is some initial studies of that space. Given the sort of mansard roof, we thought it was a nice opportunity to put in some trust work that requires, recalls some of the maritime heritage of Quincy, and we're working through the final design of those, but we feel like it's going to be a nice space, whether it's used by the students during the day or by the community in nights and weekends. The cafeteria will be much larger, have a stage that is a little more scaled to the students and today's sort of activities, and really provide a gathering space, both for the school and the community. And we'd be remiss without mentioning that the school is being set up as a resiliency hub. It's not an emergency shelter necessarily, because that has a lot of requirements, but providing a way for members of the Squanam community in the event of heat waves, power outage, things like that, that they would be able to come to the building and use that as a shelter. Again, not a formal emergency shelter, the way FEMA would think of it, but rather a resource for the community in event of those sorts of activities, a, a big storm and things. So the cafeteria is set up to do that, as well as the gymnasium. And here's a shot of the gym. Again, in this case, it becomes a gym that's sized appropriately for the elementary school activities and presumably available for the community to use after-hours and weekends. And finally, the building is targeting to be net zero. The goal is to reduce the amount of energy required to operate the building. Right now, for those who are keeping score, we're shooting for an EUI energy use intensity of twenty-five, which would put it right amongst the sort of leading high-performing buildings around the state. We've done this on a couple of buildings, and we think it's eminently doable. As Tina mentioned, using ground-source heat pump system with pump system with geothermal wells in the back helps to reduce the amount of energy the building will use over time. So the payback is really quite good on that. And then one of the benefits of those types of systems is the improved air quality. And one of our goals is to really create a very healthy learning environment for the students as well as a working environment for faculty and staff. Great. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to take it over from here.
Okay.
I grab the keyboard just so I can control. All right. Okay. So the enablement work is, right now, we don't have set dates. We have some concepts that we work to with the design team. Now that we have our construction manager onboard, we're beginning the process of really working through the details and the timeline and exact sequences for how things are going to go. So right, I'm going to present to you sort of the general sequences. We are going to put together very detailed plans, which we will be sharing as we get closer. January, we're going to be meeting, we're having a community meeting. At that time, we're going to have a lot more detailed information about the plan. So for now, tonight, I'm going to tell you sort of the general plan we have for how we're going to sequence the work. But we will be sharing more detailed information as we go through. So our intention in the spring, while students are still on site, at the back of the school in the parkland, the area in blue, that we would be doing the drilling for geo well, geothermal wells. We've already completed two of those wells as a test. Part of it is we needed to verify flow rates and how far down bedrock was, was and so forth. So we advanced those two wells with no disruption to the school and no disruption to the neighborhood. So we feel confident that we'll be able to go forward with that during the spring when students are on site. The area will be fenced off and it's a relatively quiet work that we're going to be doing. Throughout the work, the park will remain open, and the school itself will remain open. And then once students leave for the summer, our intention is to work to isolate the 1971 building in the front corner of the site. And the reason we're going to do that is we're going to repurpose that building to be the temporary school going forward. And then behind it, we're going to be putting in a temporary modular classroom that will be able to have all the number of classrooms we have currently and all the support spaces for the school. So that's going to happen during the summer. And then they'll be segregating what will become the future new construction area that is grayed out on the left side of the screen. So they'll be doing demolition over the summer, clearing the site, and there'll be a construction fence put up. So when students come back in the September, they'll be isolated to the one side of the site, separate from the construction, and the construction will exist behind a fence. So all the details of logistics of how, you know, work will stop, like, all the gates will close when school is letting in and out, so that there's no movement of vehicles. Those are all things we did at Southwest Middle School. So those are all the details that we're going to be working out with the construction manager over the next few months. And we will come back to you with more detailed plans. So then once the school's been segregated and, and the students are back and the temporary, the new building will be constructed over a two-year period behind the fenced area, which you can see in blue. Then once we get to the summer of 2027, the new building will be complete and we'll be able to move furniture in, get the technologies set up. And the idea is that when students return in September of '27, they'll be returning to a new school. And then the construction area will flip and we'll put up a fence that will, to isolate the area that was the 71 building. And where the modulators are, they'll go away. And then the work will be proceeding to put back that front corner, which will become the bus drop off area and parking. So we'll be working with our construction manager over how we're going to park staff, over the temporary period, the, the two years that the new school is going to be built during this period. It's a lot to work out. And right now, all we have for you is sort of the general sequencing. Again, there's a lot of detail that has to be worked on now that we have them onboard. So I'm going to move just briefly into some of the financials. We presented to the city council last night, this budget for the project, and asked for the appropriation for $108 million. And this is, you know, the cost of the, the project is very detailed on the right side of the screen. I didn't want to go through every bit of it. The MSBA has a very detailed process that we go through to create the budget. I simplified it on the left side of the screen for you. So the feasibility study is, that's all the costs we've spent to date. Now we're moving into the design portion of it, which is under architecture and engineering. Those are all the other costs for the design. Project management is our company, PCA 360, that will be providing onsite representation for the city throughout the duration of the work. We'll have somebody onsite. Wall work is going on overseeing the project too, alongside the construction management. Other administrative is just some allowances we have for the project. Pre-construction, that's our fee for Lee Kennedy to help us through the end of the design phase. And then the construction cost of $81 million represents just over $1,000 a square foot, which is comparable to what other schools are seeing for costs that are in the pipeline. We had the MSBA board meeting on the 30th, and there were many other projects, just like ours. It was presented and they were right where we are. It's hard to fathom, $1,000 a square foot, but that's the reality of where we are. We have gone through a period of time of lots of inflation, and it has had an impact on construction cost. But we feel confident that the number that we put forward is, is the right one. And we'll take every step we can as we move through the design for any value engineering, cost-saving measures that we might be able to do. This is the point in the design when you can start to look into some of those things. So that'll be happening over the next, you know, six months. Other project costs, that's the temporary modular building. We just bid that out recently to Ares Modular Building Systems. So we're very happy with that bid opening. We actually saw some savings over our estimated cost. So we will see some savings in that particular line item. And furnishings, fixtures, equipment, and technologies is the next line. When we did Southwest Middle School, that was a $1,200 square foot, $1,200 per student allowance that the MSBA gave us. The actual cost for Southwest was about $2,400 per student. Now, with the costs as they are, it's about double from what it was for South, from Southwest Middle School. So that's that budget. And then the contingencies that we're carrying, owner's contingency of 5% of construction is customary value that all projects carry. And owner's contingency is 4% of soft costs. And that represents the, the $108 million budget. The reimbursement rate that we have with the MSBA, when we presented this project to you last, we didn't know what the, it was going to be. And our base rate at that time was 57.57. So the MSBA has actually increased our base rate over the, the last two months, which is excellent. And then the 3% that you see for energy efficiency, that's what Larry was speaking about, the net zero. That's the highest amount of points that you can earn for energy efficiency. And then indoor air quality as well, which is the lead building that we're going to be building, has very high levels of indoor air quality. So the reimbursement rate is actually 66.24, is quite high, given all those incentive points that the project is achieving. Some of the things that do factor into the overall contribution that the city has to put forward on the project versus what the MSBA is going to contribute are these caps that the MSBA implements for every project. This is not unique to us. So we have seen some exclusions that were factored into the calculation. And as I mentioned before, for example, the 1,200 per student hasn't increased even from when we did Southwest Middle School. The MSBA has remained at that level despite the costs have gone up. But that's part of it, is they have to be fair and be able to spread the money over evenly over all, many districts. So that's why that, that's happening. So once you factor all those in, the scope exclusions, and you figure out what the MSBA's maximum grant will be, the MSBA has capped their grant at 38 million, which means the city's share is going to be about 70 million on the project. So the actual effective reimbursement rate is about 35%, which is actually quite high. Most of the projects that I've worked on, when we calculated them, they're closer to 25 to 30%. So because this project is doing such a good job going after some of these bonus incentives, it has actually helped an awful lot with increasing the reimbursement rate. So other things that the team is looking at for other sources of funds, we have some federal tax credits that are, the project is available, or is subject to. Unfortunately, we won't be able to have that come into the project till the project's completed. So hopefully, those will still be available when the project is finished. But right now, they're pretty sizable at nearly $3 million. Other incentives we have with Mass Save Rebate Program, just over $1 million, which is the highest that you can get with a ground source heat pump system. And then other is the electric vehicle charging stations. There's a grant available right now, which we'll be going after. So in all, almost $4 million worth of grants. And we'll continue to look at other opportunities to find other sources of funds to help offset the city's share as we move forward. With that, that is the end of our presentation. And we do want to let you know that we do have a project website. It's squanumsschool.com. I updated the presentation, the website today. This presentation is actually available on the website, as well as a lot of other information. So with that.
Okay.
Open it to questions.
Great. Questions? Shall we start over here? Catherine?
Thank you so much for the presentation. It's great to hear it again.
Yeah.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say thank you so much. We appreciate you keeping us up to date on the details and the families up to details on, on the, all the steps that are going to be happening. That, that's fabulous to hear. I know that's very reassuring to a lot of our families that they will be knowing what's coming up and be able to prepare, be able to prepare the students. One question, I don't know if I've heard this before, and I'm just forgetting, but the outdoor classroom, what do we have in place for rainwater drainage for that area to avoid pooling?
Go back to the plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to go back to the plan, but I'm going to turn this over to Tina to answer.
Sure. Yeah, that's, that's a great question. And, because it is outdoor space, any sort of rainwater, storm water that really falls on that surface will be collected. And really, any storm water that's within the school property is captured, collected, and infiltrated back to, to the ground. So in, if there's any sort of excess water, it will get drained as part of the city storm water system. But otherwise, in terms of the majority, it's, it's actually sized for 100-year storms. So as you can imagine, all the storm water that is being captured on a daily, weekly, annual basis, it will be recharged into the ground.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Sure.
I don't have a question.
Just thank you so much. This is so exciting for the community and for the city and for the, for the students. And, and also the, the way you've preserved some of it is really wonderful, I think, for that community also. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again, Brian and team, for the presentation. I, so I saw this on, in June, I think you presented at the community meeting as well. So there were just a few things that I didn't see in this presentation that I'm wondering if they went away, or if you just maybe didn't mention them in this one to make it a shorter presentation. You had mentioned having a lot of casual seating areas in different wings and different hallways for students to have kind of informal seating. And I remember I brought up at that meeting that while that seems like a really great idea for middle school and high school, elementary school, they don't really often have a lot, a lot of opportunities for that. So was that relooked at, or was that, are those spaces still there? Are they, did you repurpose those spaces or rethink about those spaces at all?
Yep. I can help answer that and feel free to chime in.
Do you want to go to the second floor? Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah. And I think some of the renderings that you might have seen from the previous presentation, there are some of these spaces where it does allow for some seating. And we are strategically locating, for example, by, by the entrance. So when you come in, it's part of the lobby. If a student needs to sit there and wait for their parents, that's, that, they have that ability. Or if staff is waiting for a student to come out of the front office, things like that. And then throughout the floor plan and really part of the neighborhood, the grade neighborhoods, there are what we call breakout spaces. So those are also spaces for students to work, whether it's student project work, or they're working with the staff or a team or a special ed, special teacher, that they have those spaces. But understandable that for, for this young age of children, they're not out there on their, on their own. They're always with either their class or with the staff or with the teacher.
Okay, thanks. And the second thing I noticed that was, that we didn't see was a rendering of that. I think it was, I want to say it's the second floor. I think you actually have a photo of going up the stairs from the main entrance there. But I think that maybe in the previous presentation that I saw, it was more like from the top looking down. And there was kind of a wall or railing that I think a few of us were a little uncomfortable that had seen it with the height of that. And just like having kids, like, you know, small kids, a tendency to lean over or over. Did that get relooked at at all, or is that still the same type of plan as it was in June for that?
Yeah, the, the space that you see here, it is still a double, it's a double height spaces as we connect the first floor with the second floor. So there is what you would think as like an overlook. So certainly, all the railings that you see here, whether it's stairs or at a top of, on the second floor, they are designed at a height where it prevents from fall. And I think that's what the concern is, right, in terms of students leaning over and falling. So they are at a height where it prevents fall. And those are things that we can continue to study and review more carefully with the working group and with the school building committee to understand, you know, do we need to raise that from what, what we see as a standard and increase the height, or do other design elements that would, you know, be, make sure that we're safe and, and providing safety to all, all the students?
I think the other thing too is you have a solid screen versus bars. So, you know, it's not climbable. It's a flat surface.
Right, right, yeah.
And the code requires three foot six, and we typically design four feet. So, you know, if you think it's about that tall, it discourages, sorry, discourages climbing. But we can look at that again if, if the concern is still there.
I, I just always, you know, I mean, kids are, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's new, right? All these kiddos, it's not, they're not going to look down to see their, their friends down below. And it's just a novelty to kind of, to do that, I think, in this situation. So not that, you know, obviously, we want to prevent accidental falls, but also just the ones where kids are being goofy and, you know, things like that. So just, I appreciate an extra look into that. Couple other questions I had. Is there a two-door entrance? I know a lot of buildings these days are designed more like a, I don't know what it's called, but like a failsafe or a two doors kind of entrance like that. Is that, is this building going to have that in the main entrance?
That's, all the exterior doors are going to have that. How do you describe it?
The vestibule?
Yeah, it's like a security vestibule, we'll say. Do you want the floor plan?
Yeah. And not sure you can see, so the protocol is that as the school fills up in the morning, the front entrance on Huckins, the rear entrance on Winslow and the park would be open. Students flow in. All the doors would lock. And then the, sorry, talking to the mic a little more. Visitors would be directed to the main entrance, which you see there at the bottom of the page, and would be buzzed in, as it were, into the vestibule. And then from there, directed into the office where they could be signed in, checked in, and then proceed into the school. So the rear door of the vestibule stays locked during the school day. And that, that's sort of the new way that we're dealing with security so that somebody just can't buzz themselves through. And all of a sudden, they're in the building and you're chasing them down the hallways.
Yeah, that's great. I'm glad to hear that. That's, that's good. Just a couple of quick questions. You had mentioned on one of the slides that the street widening is going to maybe happen in the spring slash summer. Any widening or work to Huckins, would that be, would that wait until after the kids get out of school for the summer? I know that's a real difficult area for pickup and drop off. And then if you add construction to the mix there, that could be a potential pretty messy situation.
It's a very good point. So this, one of the infrastructure projects the city is also working on alongside our project is undergrounding the electric lines. So we have to work, they have not, they're out to bid right now. So they haven't awarded their contractor. So we have to work out the detail for when they're going to go and we're going to go. So we are not working on the front end back at the school at the same time. So yeah, that's a consideration. We have to make sure that we have accommodations for pickup and drop off bus throughout any of the work that we're doing. So the logistics and traffic management is a key. And that is something that we're going to be working on over the next few months.
Okay. Thanks.
Very good point.
And I think my last question, I think, is back at that meeting, I had asked about, so the gym situation for kids during construction. I know the, you know, the new building will obviously eventually have a very nice gym. But during construction, there were some ideas being floated around. I think Paul mentioned maybe working with the Kennedy Center to get kids to do gym over there sometimes. Now, you can use the playground for good days. But to have gym kind of on a regular basis through the colder months. Have you guys had any more details about what kids would do for movement opportunities kind of in a gym-type place?
Yeah, we had, I was trying to see if we had a plan that would show it better. So the, the school right now has, in the 1971 building, I don't know if, go to the, so the 1971 building at the lower area has a very high space in the middle. So recent change is that we've modified that so that is a multipurpose space. So it can be used for cafeteria, but also for a gross motor space as well. So it's going to be, there's a corridor that rings it. There are points at which we're going to wall that off to create separation between the classrooms and that space. The goal for the school will be to use outside for recess, as they do now, as much as they can. Because right now, the cafeteria, when they're in, having lunch, it's the gym. And so they actually use outside for recess. So they will try and use outside as much as possible. The playground will remain open throughout all the work. But if they, you have a day where they need to stay inside, they will be able to use that interior space. But we have left open the possibility if they had to bus to Kennedy Center.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Good to have you back, Brian. Couple of thoughts. The, you know, I know you did exceptional work at Southwest and there were buildings that were adjacent to each other there. So you're no stranger to that. This is much smaller footprint, you know, which complicates things. So the devil's going to be in the details as you meet with the community. And we talked through the evolution of the modulators and pickup and drop off and all of that. So I look forward to going to the community meetings and hearing some of that. But that's a challenge.
It's going to be a challenge.
That will be a big challenge for you. The, you know, the other thing that struck me is how long the process takes. And I know it was MSBVA for a long time, but this was announced in 2015. And here we are, it's going to open in 2027. That's a long, a long wait after, you know, a public declaration. So I'm impressed with the resiliency with the community features, with the sustainability aspects of it. I think you are an optimist. If you think the alternative energy tax credits are still going to exist in a couple of years. So I'm hopeful that they do, but I'm not sure that they will. I did have one issue that y'all didn't mention. I didn't know if you could speak to is the security features of the building that I didn't see in the presentation. If there's anything at this point you could talk through.
Yeah, there's, we have had several meetings with the security consultant that works for Arrow Street and Quincy Police and Quincy Public School Security as well. So there's a lot going on. We, that's information that we don't like to put out publicly.
Okay, I got you. We could subsequently do it, maybe an exec session.
So superintendent and assistant superintendent are in those meetings. So they're aware of everything that's happening. But there's a lot of, there's an awful lot going on in the background. It's a new day and age, and there are a lot of measures that are being looked at to make sure that the school is very safe.
It would be useful, Mr. Superintendent, down the road, an exec session.
Yeah, I would say a very robust camera system outside and inside the building, robust locking systems tied to alarm systems, and then also tied to the lockdown system. So that, without giving away the particulars, it is, will be a very robust system. And then the other thing we're doing is working through the specifics of how that happens in the 19, in the interim condition while we're under construction. So again, not wanting to have a period of time where there's some vulnerability. It won't be quite as robust as the final project, but we're still working through some details there. So I think that's a reasonable way of putting it without getting too deep into the details, which we shouldn't do.
Got it. And then I think Larry, you said that when all is said and done, it's going to be the space within the school is 60% larger than the current space. And is that strictly based on dimensional requirements? Or is there something more?
That's responding to essentially the current educational standards set forth by the MSBA. So the spaces, all the classrooms, special education spaces, et cetera, and so forth, are all really in alignment with what the MSBA is expecting as well as what the district's needs are. And then when you add all those up, it becomes a much more robust building than what is there today. And that's quite typical in most of these projects where today's schools are more robust than previous historically schools. So that's just the accounting of square footage. And then the question was how to make it look and feel as intimate a building as we can.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do. Appreciate it.
Sorry, I just had one more that I wrote down that I, sorry, that I forgot to ask about. So I am learning about the way the air conditioning, it's not an air conditioning unit, but how the building gets cooled. And I'm just wondering if you could do a quick, kind of not super technical version or description of what that is, just so people at home understand that while it's not going to be an air-conditioned building, that there is, that there is some work being done to cool the buildings and that it's done in other schools that seems to be working well at. If you could speak to that just a little bit for people watching.
Southwest Middle School is, it's going to be very similar to how that school is done. So the, the system's designed to remove humidity. And so by the function of removing humidity, you do cool the air to a point so that your comfort, it comes from that dew point and where, you know, the amount of moisture in the building. So the building will have the ability to reduce that dew point down. So not cooled quite to the temperatures that you would have for a full air conditioning system. But it's, and it's also sort of tied to what outside is. If you had, you know, a very demanding day, you'll probably see a 20-degree difference from inside to out. So normally, on a, you know, when the school's in session, you're not getting those types of days, you know, the 100-degree day, you know, not often. You know, it's, you do have some shoulder seasons, you know, early September and early June, you can get some pretty warm days. But anyhow, so that's, we're able to condition the building. You'll notice a significant difference from inside to out because of that function of humidification.
Yeah, I would tend, I tend to describe it as air conditioning light in the sense that the set points are different. Typically, a set point for full air condition is about 72 degrees. And typically, if I remember right, we're about 78 degrees. What you're doing, as Brian's saying, is by cooling the air some, but not all, you're wringing out the moisture. And that's what air conditioning does a real good job of. But you're not expending all the energy that you might be if you were to really cool the air down. And a lot of times, you know, and everybody experiences this, oftentimes you go into an air-conditioned space and you say, whoa, I'm really chilly. Where's my sweater to wear in the summertime? So this seems to be a good place. We've done it in a bunch of schools so far. People are reacting well to it. We haven't heard complaints. And then there are some areas like the main administrative offices that get the full air conditioning so that people who are in the building year-round have the ability to set, use the different set points.
To Doug's point. Could that be grandfathered in with the help of our two U.S. senators to do something constructive for us before something happens that may take that away? I mean, has anybody contacted them? Correct. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess our understanding is it's a rebate program. So you do the work and then you get the tax credits on the other side. You know, I think everybody's asking the same questions with the potentially new Congress coming in, what's going to be their take on it. We can certainly ask at our end, see if some sources would tell us. And if you guys hear something, let us know because we're anxious to know what this will do to us.
How would that impact the cost of the policy energy credit?
I think if we go back to that slide, there's 2.3 million with the solar wind of 357,000. So roughly 2.6, 2.7 million.
About 2.7.
Money has to be there for them to, you know, that's the problem.
Should be, should be grandfathered in guaranteed.
Well said. I just would like to say that I joined the team just a few months ago. And I feel as though we're in great hands and there's experience all across the board. We have the experience of the project. This is not anyone's first rodeo. It's maybe mine. But to see the, you know, the experience in how to run these projects, what the barriers are going to be, where you might see some difficulties, even with the, you know, when Lee Kennedy and the other teams came in to make presentations, talking about where they're going to park, where the construction people are going to park so they don't impact the students and the everyday school functions, between the, you know, academic standards, safety standards, construction standards. And then we had Dr. Perkins and Principal Sylvia, parents. It's really an amazing process to see but everyone's experience coming into the picture to really kind of make this a smooth process, which I think we all understand. When you come to construction, it's probably not always smooth and there'll be things that we have to deal with. But, and even with the city side and the mitigation of all the other things around the building. So I'm certainly impressed. I feel confident in, by being in the meetings and seeing how, what you bring to the table and look forward to pushing the project forward. So thank you for all the work. I think it's amazing. And I do want to say, I know Mrs. Purdy and some of my colleagues are always questioning about keeping parents updated and having your website. And I know when Lee Kennedy's team came to the table, they're going to have digital platforms that you can go into and get like almost daily updates onto where the project is and how the construction is impacting the area, which is, I think, amazing for parents who are going to have to, you know, kind of work around the project. So thank you for everything and thank you for the presentation. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well said.
Thanks so much.
Okay, switching gears. Now we will have a presentation, the QPS Spring 2024 Vocal Data, presented by Dr. Perkins and Mr. Mariani. Mr. Marani.
Thank you very much for having us tonight. So we are going to go through the vocal data with you. We did separate this from the MCAS data, which was our last presentation a couple of weeks ago because the MCAS data is so much and the vocal data is a lot. And so we really felt like it was a more effective way to present the information. So today, Mr. Marani and I are going to talk about, just give you a brief reminder of the history of the vocal survey, just a little bit about what the vocal survey is, how the vocal survey is broken down into the different dimensions that you see there, engagement, safety, and environment. And then how we then look at it and interpret it and what it says to us as a district and then to the individual principals. So just to remind you a little bit about the history of the vocal survey. The vocal survey is based on the conceptual framework of the U.S. Department of Education School Climate Survey. It does a couple of things for us. The Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education sponsors it. It's voluntary and it's annual. It's given to students who are in the fourth, fifth, eighth, and 10th grade. And they participate in the survey as part of the MCAS administration each year. And it's typically at the end of, it's the last thing they do as part of the MCAS administration. It was first administered in Quincy Public Schools in the spring of 2019. And at that point, it was only given to grades four and grade 10. And it occurred after the math MCAS. So now, grades four and grade 10, as I mentioned, it's at the very, it's very end of the MCAS and they complete it after they take the math test. And in grades five and eight, it's the last thing they do after they complete the science test. It takes about 20 minutes for the students to complete it. Another thing that doesn't say on this slide, but it also does help the state to meet the requirements that are included in the Massachusetts Act relative to bullying. So just a quick overview of what the vocal survey includes. So the survey is designed to provide districts with information on student perceptions of three dimensions of school climate. And you can see those dimensions here. They are engagement, safety, and environment. And I won't read all of the descriptors to you, but engagement includes three components. It includes cultural competence, relationships, and participation. And so just a brief summary of what that means. It's basically looking to see that students feel valued, that they have a social connection to their school, and that they feel engaged both intellectually and emotionally and behaviorally in the classroom. The safety environment includes emotional safety, physical safety, and bullying. And basically, what that means is that, again, students feel connected or bonded to the school and supported, that they feel physically safe. And that when there is bullying at a school or when something happens, you know, that pertains to bullying, that the adults, the students, and the staff intervene and stop it. In environment, it's instructional environment, mental health environment, and discipline environment. And it, this basically is that it, the environment is collaborative. It's appropriately challenging and supportive, that it provides access to resources like mental health and counseling, and that the discipline is fair and it's distributed equitably across students and groups, that there's no discrepancy in how a rule is applied. So the dimensions and the topics by grade level. So these are the total number of questions per grade. I will say it is a complex formula that they use. Please don't ask me a lot of details about it because it's a very difficult comp of formula to understand. And it is, some of these items are weighted differently. So I think that that's important to note, that they're not all weighted equally. So then next is our participation as with MCAS, as with access. We have excellent participation. We're significantly higher than the state in participation. And so the, meaning the majority of kids took it, took the, took the vocal survey. And so I think that what that says to us is that when we're thinking about students' perceptions, this was a pretty good sampling of our students in that moment in time for how they are feeling about the climate and the culture of their individual schools. So how the scores are broken down, they're broken down by, in two ways, by index scores and then by individual item responses. So the index scores are complicated. They, DZ developed index scores for the three dimensions of climate, engagement, safety, and environment. and environment, along with an overall climate, school climate index score. So most of the scores across the state of Massachusetts fall between a 35 and a 75. It is based on a 1 to 99 range, and I'll talk a little bit about what that means in a minute. I mentioned that all of this is, you know, driven from the individual item responses, so you do get a score, and Mr. Marani will talk about it, on the individual item responses, and then that's aggregated, weighted, and then that's how they end up with the dimension scores. It does give you an opportunity to look at potential differences in perceptions that kids are feeling about their school, or their climate, or the safety, or bullying, or things like that, across grade levels, groups, and schools. However, the students are different. So the students who took the test in fifth grade, you cannot compare fifth grade to eighth grade. The kids are different, and the test is different, the survey, I should say, is different. But it does let you, in general, monitor progress, you can see big trends, if there is a trend in how students are feeling about a certain area of their school, or, you know, like a safety, you can, it does let you monitor trends over time. So the benchmark profiles, as I mentioned, they call them benchmark profiles or narratives. These profiles, you can look at your score, and they provide a detailed narrative of how students with an average score, and their benchmark, their, what they call their cut scores, are 30, 50, and 70, because those are what they feel is where students kind of typically respond. That's what's typical in those different cut scores. And so you can see that it's, there's four categories, it's, if it's, the index score is below a 30, it means it's least favorable or not favorable for the students, meaning there are some concerning perceptions for the kids and how they're feeling about school. Somewhat favorable, which is 31 to 50, meaning that things happen often, maybe not 100% of the time, but they happen often. Favorable is 51 to 70% of the time, and then most favorable is greater than 70. So overall, this is our overall school climate score, and I would say overall, across the state, the students in grades four and five, and this is historically, and also I think it's, you see it this year, students in grades four and five respond in a way that's consistent with a perception of school climates that are more positive typically than students in grades eight and 10. The younger they are, the more positive they typically feel about school, and that is historic. In terms of grades four and five across the state, there was a decline in, in general, and in all grades, and they were typically reporting a less favorable rating on peer behavior. So any items related to peer-to-peer behavior, we definitely saw, and we see it too, and Mr. Marani is going to talk about it a little bit, but we definitely saw a dip, I would say, not just in four and five, but across all grade levels, but in particular in four and five. And interesting though, on the reverse end of that, what was very strong, and Mr. Marani will talk about, is teacher interaction with students. That was very positive in some of our highest scores, and this, in terms of like state performance, in grades eight and 10, that was a common theme throughout the state, that scores were more favorable in respect to how teachers intervene, how discipline occurs, and student voice. Those were all, had, you know, had more favorable outcomes than previously. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Marani, who will talk a little bit more in-depth about the different dimensions.
Thank you, Dr. Perkins. Good evening, everybody. The information that Dr. Perkins just went over on Slide 9, as she mentioned, that's the overall look. So that's the index scores that we can take away and look at, generally speaking, you know, what the results were. However, what I am going to go over are each of the three dimensions, engagement, safety, and environment. And I'll also include a couple of the subdomains that are including within those dimensions. The state does give us index scores for a few of those pieces, so I'll go over that. And I'll also talk about strengths and areas for concern for each of these three dimensions. So when we look at engagement, and you'll hear me say this quite a bit as I go through each of these three dimensions, the pattern continues. These charts will look very similar despite being across different dimensions. We hover between somewhat favorable and favorable categories, specifically grades four and five are in the favorable categories in engagement climate, and grades eight and 10 are in somewhat favorable. And as Dr. Perkins mentioned, that decline is pretty typical in terms of looking at grade moving up from grade four up to grade eight, you typically see that decline. And you'll notice that, you know, across all these charts, you'll see a lot of consistency. One of the tasks I had prior to this presentation was looking through the Vocal Test Survey Guide. In other words, what DESI offers as far as recommendations in terms of how to interpret this data. And one item that's in there is, what you're looking for is big differences. So if you're comparing, for example, engagement to safety, you would hope to see roughly the same ranges of numbers. If you're comparing grade levels, you should see, again, traditional declines, but you shouldn't see glaring differences as you compare. So when you make those comparisons, you hope to avoid any major differences, and, you know, what you'll see as I go through this is there's nothing kind of outstanding as a drastic difference. So that's important to help us interpret and use this data and make it actionable. So breaking it down a little bit further, so we have an index score for the participation domain within the engagement dimension. So again, we mirror the state roughly, so we see a slight difference in some, but none of great significance. And we also, again, hover between grade four and five in the favorable, while grade eight and grade 10 are just in the somewhat favorable categories. And again, that's within the participation domain in engagement. When we look at our strengths, there's quite a bit there. Dr. Perkins alluded to this just a few moments ago. Rather than read through all of those strengths, I just want to point out a recurring theme that we see when we look at this, and that is, students know their teachers care about them in Quincy Public Schools, and there's data here that just confirms that. It's not a surprise to us because we know the educators that are working with these students, and we see it on a regular basis, but it is certainly nice to see data affirming what we know. Grade four, my teachers care about me as a person, 95% of the students perceive that to be true. Grade five, 93%. Grade eight, slightly different wording, but same message, adults working at the school treat all students respectfully, 92% agree with that. And grade 10, 90% agree with that. So again, the overall theme is, these students know that their teachers care about them. And I shouldn't just say teachers, all educators, so guidance counselors, nurses, anybody working in a school, they apply to this. And as far as areas of improvement, again, though there are a few different data points offered here, the two that I would like to highlight are, when you look at participation, grades four, five, and eight, you see their responses to my classmates behave the way my teachers want them to. Grade four is 66%, grade five is 53%, and grade eight is 54%. In other words, they believe this to be mostly or always true. You know, those are obviously the majority of the students, we just want, we would like to see those numbers be a little bit higher in terms of how they perceive their peers and their classmates, and their behavior and their conduct within the classroom. It's interesting information, but of course, we would hope to see that number climb over time. And then similarly, the relationship data point, grades five, eight, and 10, students respect each other in my school. For grade five, 63%, grade eight, 61%, and grade 10, 64%. So we see a little bit of a climb compared to the other data point that I mentioned. But again, you really hope, you know, that students see in one another what role models should be doing. And so though we're happy, you know, again, more than the majority, however, we'd like to see that number, those numbers climb. And I should just add, restorative justice, community circles, open parachute, these are ongoing action steps that we've been implementing, will continue to implement, to help support students and hopefully see the perceptions move up. So shifting to safety climate, this includes emotional safety, physical safety, along with bullying, which I will have an index score on that to share. But overall, within the safety climate dimension, again, I'm going to be a broken record here, we see that we mirror the state, we see that the pattern continues, and that we have, you know, roughly these grade levels in the favorable or somewhat favorable categories. I do just want to point out, there's a, you know, slight dip in grade eight and grade 10 when compared to the other dimensions. As you, as I mentioned earlier, it's important to look for those differences across the dimensions, so we did see a slight dip when comparing grade eight and grade 10 index scores to the other dimension index scores. We saw a slight increase in grade five and no change in grade four. Again, this is just if we're comparing to the engagement index, which I just shared with you. However, all of those differences, we wouldn't identify them as significant differences, they wouldn't exceed moderate per the guidance that the vocal survey guidelines offered us. And when we narrow it down to bullying, we do see grade four in the favorable, and then grades five, eight, and 10 in the somewhat favorable. Again, no glaring differences as we compare one to another. Some of the strengths that we saw here, the major theme throughout this, again, reiterates what we talked about with the engagement piece, across all grade levels, the vast majority agree that if they tell a teacher about bullying, if they report to their, to their teachers about bullying, that they're either a victim of, or if they observe it, it will be addressed. Specifically, grade eight, I'm sorry, grade four, 92%, grade five, 90%, grade eight, 87%, and grade 10, 88%. So this, to me, means a lot because we know, you know, you put a lot of people in a building, there's going to be conflict, you know? When you put students in a building, even, let's say, a lot of adults in a building, there's going to be conflict. So the question is, how is it handled? And the perception of the students who responded to this survey feel as though there's a person to turn to and get help when those things come up. So obviously, we try to minimize any of that, but when it does happen, they do have somebody to turn to, and they perceive it that way as well. So we're proud of that, but not surprised by it, I should add. Let's see here, when we look at some of the areas for improvement, quite frankly, there doesn't appear to be any data here that indicates major concerns. I think many of these, we can all agree, we'd like to be as close to zero as possible for those negative-based questions, but, you know, for example, if you look at the first two questions towards the top for grades four and five, or the last question for grade eight, we want that percent to be as close to zero as possible. So for grade four, I have been hit by other students more than once in school, 37%, that's always or mostly true. The reality is, we want that to happen zero times, right? We don't want that to happen at all. 30% is a minority of times, but we consider it an area for improvement because, quite frankly, we want that, we want to, we want to prevent that from happening at all. Grade five, in a slightly different wording, I've been punched or shoved by other students more than once in the school or in the playground, 40% say that's mostly true or always true. I do just want to add the caveat that that is a very difficult question because the perception of physical contact out at recess in the playground, students could be playing, and it might get a little physical, or it could be actual physical aggression, and that's not delineated in the question. So for a student answering this question, how they interpret that obviously is going to influence those results. So it's just important to note that. And then, you know, as I mentioned with grade eight, students at school damage and/or steal other students' property, there's 43% that believe that's always or mostly true. So these are absolutely percentages that we want to see a decrease in, but remember, year to year, it's really not appropriate to compare the percentages, and I should add that DESI does not advises us against that because these cohorts are different year to year. So when we look at grade five this year and grade five next year, these are going to be different cohorts, and therefore, what they see is going to change year to year. And so those results, it's tricky to just say we want that number to go down year to year. Really, what we want is all of our students to experience these things as little as possible, if at all. And I do just want to point out at grade 10, you know, we'd like to see that, we'd like to see this number go up. So we have 59% of students at school try to work out their problems with other students in a respectful way. So 59% of students responded that this is always or mostly true. We would like to see that number to be a little bit higher, especially when you think about it, these students are taking this survey just as they finish MCAS, which puts them at the end of their 10th grade school year. So they're going into their 11th grade, their 12th grade, they're hitting a point of maturity, hopefully, that allows them to navigate, you know, any disagreements, conflict, problems that they have with one another respectfully. That's ideal, that's what we strive for, for our students. So we certainly would like to see that number improve over time, or increase over time. And then the third dimension, environment, climate, this consists of instructional, mental health, and discipline. So the index score is here, pattern continues on, so I won't be a broken record. However, I do just want to point out that we saw, this aligns more so with the overall numbers, where you start to see the shift up in grade 10. You see the index score go up to that 48 there, and you see that obviously at the state level as well, so just an observation worth noting. So we have two of the grade levels, four and five, in the favorable categories, eight and 10 in the somewhat favorable categories, both very close to the favorable categories. And then when we look at the instructional domain, that, the same data is true, in that we see that slight uptick in grade 10, and we see both grade four and grade five within the favorable, while grade eight and grade 10 are in the somewhat favorable. And moving on to the strengths within the environment, we have some high percentages here that talk a lot about how students perceive their teachers as, in terms of how proud they are. Grade four, 97% perceive their teachers as proud of them when they work hard in school. Grade five, 94%. In grade eight, 87%. And then, you know, my teacher sets high expectations for my work, 87%. My teacher supports me even when my work is not my best, 84%. That's at grade 10. So what we're seeing throughout all of these three dimensions is an absolute theme of, you know, educators working as hard as they can to support their students and make sure that whatever they encounter, whether it be social, emotional, whether it be academic, that they are being supported, particularly when they're struggling, that the importance of hard work is emphasized. In other words, the expectations for students to achieve is set high for our students. And this is great feedback. If I could just kind of embellish for just a moment, one of the things I love about my role as curriculum director is I get to talk to a lot of educators, brand-new educators, seasoned educators, aspiring educators. And so a lot of times, what comes up in that conversation is the term, "relationship is the road to rigor." And I think if you look at the data that we've seen over the last three dimensions and in our overall score, that's absolutely true. That sentiment is true in Quincy Public Schools, and that these educators are working hard to make sure these kids know they care about them, that they support them, that they will be there for them. So if there's bullying that they observe, that there will be somebody there to step up and help them, and ultimately, that then leads to students' academic success. So that's just nice. Again, this is stuff that many educators know and believe. It's nice when you look at data and you see some of those beliefs confirmed. And then just some areas of improvement. So when we look at instructional, again, rather than go through all of these, I just want to, you know, talk about a couple of these. The grade four and grade five, when I am home, I like to learn more about things we are learning in school. We have 54% at grade four saying that's mostly or always true. Grade five, 46%, that's always or mostly true. And then a similar style question for grade 10, slightly different wording, but the things I am learning in school are relevant to me, 57%, that's always or mostly true. You know, in no way do we assume that every student is going to be thrilled about graphing exponential functions at home. That's not what we're expecting. There will be some that love it, as a former math teacher, I didn't mind it, but the majority of students aren't going to go home and be thrilled about that. However, I do think when you look at these types of questions and you say, okay, well, what if we look at this as just general curiosity? How can we get students to be curious about what they're learning, so that they might be motivated on their own to learn more? So that they might be motivated on their own to learn more about it. Then those percentages become a little bit more telling to us, a little bit more helpful to us. Curiosity is such a crucial part of the learning process. And so for us, it is a good area to say, yeah, we, we could do some work here to try and help students become more curious, right? It's not easy to do, but it is something that, you know, can help guide us, you know, as we move forward throughout the school year. So that covers the three dimensions, along with the strengths, areas of improvement, and those subdomains. I'm going to hand it back to Dr. Perkins to talk about the index scores by race and ethnicity.
Thank you, Mr. Marani. And I would just say, the other thing, I don't think we had it in there, but I do just want to point out that there were, there are a couple of questions about principals and the principals' role in, you know, like intervening if someone is being bullied or something is happening. And they, those were all really positive scores as well. So teachers, for sure, you know, the kids are definitely feeling like, they know our teachers love them. They know our teachers care about them, but they also know that the principals are there to support them. And so that obviously made us very happy. And so just in terms of the scores, the index scores by race, we did look at it by race. And I will say, across the state, one of the things that they pointed out, you know, to us in the guidance and the webinars and things that we've had, is that in general, our Asian students across the state of Massachusetts had tended to have a more favorable perception of the, of their schools. And so, you know, you can see on the engagement by race, we really don't have, it's pretty even, as Mr. Marani said. And what we're looking for when we look at it by race is we're looking to see are there significant differences between the index score responses. So, you know, is one score 50 and another one 70, you know, something like that. I mean, that's extreme, but, so we're looking to see. And if there are differences, you know, where are those differences? In what item responses are they showing up? And so you can see in engagement, we're pretty even, you know, a point or two, which is not a significant difference at all in their responses, which is good to see, meaning across different races, our kids are feeling similarly about their perceptions of school. In safety, we do see a little bit of a dip with our African-American population, although it does mirror the state and not significantly different amongst the different race, ethnicity groups, but definitely a little bit lower, you know, in particular between Asian and African-American. You see a little bit of a bigger difference there. So, you know, the guidance basically says, you know, anything over four points, you know, you should kind of be looking at. And so that's absolutely an area that we're looking at there and encouraging, obviously, the principals to look at as well. And then environment by race, you see, again, the category that says other is a little bit lower for our district than, you know, the, the other category, than the, the categories, the African-American, Asian, Hispanic, or white. So it's another area that we would, you know, be, we'll be focusing on. And so, you know, one thing we do just want to say as we share this data with you is that the state absolutely encourages us, and we agree, this is one piece of data. And so, you know, that we are not supposed to, you know, supposed to look at this in isolation because it's one moment in time after a series of tests, you know, and kids, it's, it, some of these scores are, like, they're open to interpretation on how you do interpret the scores. It's helpful, but it should be taken alongside other forms of data that reflect the school climate and culture and not on its own. And so, you know, some of the other things we look at, and obviously, when you have a positive school climate and culture, these things will improve. Things like attendance rates will go up when students feel good about coming to school. Chronic absenteeism will go down. So when you have, you know, high, you know, positive attendance rates and you have really good vocal data, you know, you can, I think you can say, when you look at those two things together, our climate is pretty good. Our kids are coming to school, our vocal data is good, you know? So those are the things, you know, we look at with the principals and we talk about. We want chronic absenteeism, obviously, to go down. Discipline, like along, how, when you're looking at things like vocal data, how are your discipline referrals? You know, if you have a positive school environment and these scores and things are going well, discipline referrals should be going down. Graduation rate should be going up. Social, emotional learning, hopefully happening, and, you know, those things are going well, and those supports are in place. And then curriculum updates, because some of these questions do definitely have to do with the curriculum and the rigor of the curriculum and the support that's provided within the curriculum. And so making sure you have, have strong curriculum as part of it. So those are the, we look at this as like a whole, not just, we're presenting it to you tonight, we're doing exactly what we shouldn't be doing, but we are presenting it to you tonight in isolation. But when we look at it with the principals, it's one item, which is why it is included in their school improvement plans. You do have the, we shared with you the list of all of the responses, and you will also see all of the individual responses are in the appendix in the school improvement plans. So all of the data that we have, you have. And so with that, we will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you both. I, I love to see the high scores that reflect how supportive the teachers are across grade levels. That's phenomenal. I have three super quick questions that I'm sure you can answer quickly. Did I, did I read it accurately that in all categories, we essentially mirrored the state average?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, pretty close anyways.
Yeah, I mean, within a percentage.
Yeah.
And obviously, when we talk about the school improvement plans, which we will in the next month, we'll talk school-specific, you know, every principal's been great about sharing their vocal data. Do you sit, and if so have you already, annually with each principal, track their trends and develop changes based on their school-specific data?
Absolutely. Yes, we do.
When does that happen?
It hap, it happens.
Already happened?
Yes, already happened. Like, October.
At the beginning.
We meet with them multiple, we meet, we meet with them, we go through the district presentation, then we go through their, and their school data. We give them time to talk together about their school data, the trends that they're seeing. You know, we, they, we have them actually up here, and we break it down by grade level. And then we communicate, you know, with them throughout the school improvement plan process. So I know, Mr. Marani, I should have mentioned, and I'm so sorry, that Chris Tierney is in the back here, our assessment and data coordinator, who, you know, we drove crazy putting this presentation together, asking a million questions and to look at data in a different way. But yeah, we do, we do all of that. So pretty much throughout the whole fall, we, we are in constant communication with them about their, their data.
And then final question. The, you said first year was 2019, so we've got five years. What's the trend data? I can't remember year to year, the last year's, all the presentations that we've done. What's the trend data? What's changed? What, today, after looking at five years of trend data, are you most proud of or concerned with?
So one thing to point out, you can't look at the, compare this data to anything prior to the administration in 2021. So the, the way that they aggregated, I guess, or the, the rating scale was different when they first administered it from 2018 to 2020, 21. It wasn't given during COVID. And so it, anything you compare it to has to be after 2021.
So you have three years.
Three years, yeah. And so I would say, like, the things that we constantly talk about are, the, I read books that reflect me. I think that is one that we, every year, that's been a trend. We keep trying. We, we are bringing in more diverse texts. This, you know, recently, I just said to Chris and, and Mike and Mr. Marani, I said, can we pull this by, you know, demographic data? Can we look at, like, is there a discrepancy between how the kids are responding to the question, like, you know, I read books that reflect me? And there isn't. There, it's pretty evenly split across the board. About 50% say almost mostly true, and 50% say, you know, mostly never true.
Do you know if that's the same across the state?
I did.
For that question?
Yeah, it was, it's actually, I did look at it today, and I think it was, it's pretty close. I think the state might have had a little bit of a higher almost mostly true than us. But it was, it was, it was not a huge difference between, you know, how our kids are scoring and, or reporting and how the state is reporting. But so those are, like, that's definitely a trend. I think that, you know, the safety one, when Mr. Marani talked about it, that's been a trend for a few years. They, you know, punt like someone hitting you, things like that. Those are, those are, definitely, we've seen that over time, you know, and continue to work with our principals to address it, you know? And I think the bullying one was a little bit lower. I actually think that's trending in the opposite direction, and that is going in a more positive direction for us, especially when it comes to, maybe not so much this children reporting it, which I will point out, they use that as an example in the guidance documents, that they rate that higher because that is a harder thing for kids to do in fourth grade or fifth grade to go and intervene. They, they see a bullying situation, and you're asking a 10-year-old to go and intervene and stop it. That's really challenging. And so that, when we, I talked about the weighting of the questions, that question is weighted higher than some of the other questions because it is a more difficult thing for students to do. So, you know, so I, but I do think in terms of staff and principals intervening and stopping bullying, that's actually, we've seen an improvement in that. So those are some of the things that we've talked about that we've noticed.
And I have a fourth question. So do you, do you see for certain questions that some schools, specific schools skew the district data around certain questions?
I don't, I don't think so, no, not that I can think of. I think we're, they're all pretty close.
Okay.
You know, they all, they, you know, there might be some differences here and there, but I think in general, the responses are pretty similar.
And it's a, it's a voluntary survey?
Voluntary for, for us, yeah.
Do you know how many, how many communities do it?
Well, there, you saw the participation rate. There was, it's about a 70, high 70-ish.
Okay. Out of whatever these districts, yeah.
Yes, it's about, what, 350-ish districts?
There's 351 cities and towns. I don't know how many school districts there are. So, yeah, 75%, right. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I have a couple of questions. First, a comment under the engagement. You mentioned it for two of the grades, where students like to have friends who are different from themselves. That is an incredible amount. I mean, it's 88, 87, 94, and 92% across. And that is really a testament to our community, that our kids are really getting along like that. So I absolutely love to see that. But to your point and Mr. Gutrot's point, the, I read books in class that include people who are similar to me. That's for years, this has not been good. And I can remember during the pandemic, Superintendent, that we actually met on Zoom with high school people who were talking about addressing that. And my question is, I know our teachers know who are in front of them. So I want to know, what is the process for selecting class books? What is the process in Quincy Public Schools? I would like to put that into teaching and learning. How are we selecting books, or how are we not selecting books? Because I think our teachers know these kids, and if they get a chance to select books, I'm sure they would be addressing. Do we let teachers select books?
We do. We have an approved book list, and teachers, you know, will, will, especially, I think, more in the higher grades, like four and up, they will, you know, request.
What is an approved book list?
Like, so they'll, they'll say, we want to introduce this book into the curriculum, and then it goes to the curriculum office. Bridget Vaughn is the one that primarily oversees it. And so we review it, we read it, and then we'll say, okay, you can teach it, like, that's approved. And so then it gets added on to our approved book list.
So one person is making a decision about this?
No, we all, the whole curriculum team, but Bridget is.
What about educators?
Oh, yeah, the educators are proposing it to us. So the educators work with Bridget.
Okay. I'd like to just put that in, in teaching and learning, to see what the process is of doing that, because I just know our teachers know who's in front of them. And if we're not improving this, then some, there's a roadblock somewhere. And I just like to figure out what that is. So that's one thing. I'm sorry. And I, there's this question about when I am home, I like to learn about things I'm learning in school. I never really thought much about that question, but I think the new curriculum at the elementary level, the ELA curriculum, which is called the content, CK.
Core knowledge, yeah.
Core knowledge. I think that was going to really make a difference because the kids are really engaged with that and talking about things that they want. So I think that will, I, I'm not all that concerned about it, to your point, Mr. Marani. When I went home, I wanted to play. Most kids want to play, but I do think that that's going to help because it does, it's core knowledge, but it also is what they're interested in. On page 19, oh, one, one more thing than this one here. The other thing that I was, okay, on page 19, Mr. Gutrot has been bringing this up for years, but these incidents of fights and being punched and, we have asked repeatedly if we could see what kind of incidents are taking place out there and find some way to do it without, without not being confidential. But we've asked, you've asked for that several times, that there's so many incidents that we just never get to see what is actually going on in our schools. We don't know. And I'm not sure where that belongs. Does that belong in the athletic and safety subcommittee? Or where does that belong that we can?
I don't care if it's executive fashion. I just want to go over the data.
Yeah, I, me too.
The categories of all the incidents.
Yeah. Yeah, we, and so I, when you see these kinds of numbers, that I have seen more than one fight in my school in the last month, 44 and 38%. That's, that's a lot in, in the bullying too. So that's a concern. And another real concern of mine is, I feel comfortable reaching out to teachers or counselors for emotional support, even though they think their teachers love them, and they're, they're not, they don't feel comfortable reaching out to them. So that's 52% feel comfortable reaching out to their teachers. And by teachers, that means, as you said, guidance, counselors, nurses, anybody else that's in the building, the principals, so.
What grade are you looking at?
I'm looking at grade, right now, this is grade eight.
I just, I, I'm not to interject with your conversation. Just two things, just to piggyback off what you're saying. The thing about, you know, the fights in school and I've been punched or shoved more than, and you have like 40% or more, right? To your point, I would think that that would, would be, if, if this was really happening in a school and we knew about it, our incident rates would be huge, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, and, and to, you know, Mr. Gutrot's point.
We don't know.
Yeah. And, and that's where we can, can kind of validate what the, what the kids are saying in their voice data, you know?
Yeah, I do, I do think, you know, when, especially like when you look at grade four and grade five, we do not see huge numbers of incidences. So, you know, personally, I do, I do think that some of it is like what Mr. Marani said. You know, sometimes, my mother used to say, like, when you're fooling around outside, somebody's going to always end up crying, right? And so like, you know, there's a lot, there is roughhousing that happens at a school, and somebody gets pushed and somebody falls, that don't necessarily rise to the level. I'm not saying it's correct. I'm not saying it should happen, but it doesn't, it's not going to show up in the incident data because some, that some things that it just, sometimes it happens at recess, you know?
Well, and I think to, and, and what's also reflective is what you're saying about kids feeling comfortable about saying something, which I think, and, you know, I'm not in the classroom every day, so I don't know, but I would think that students are just shy about, if they have an issue, telling someone about it, you know? So I think that, and how do you change that?
I agree with that when it says, I feel, I feel safe saying something in a classroom. You know, most kids are not going to feel safe saying something in a classroom. Having one adult that they can go to, that's the goal of all education, is that there is one caring adult in the building that those kids can go to. And the, and to the other point, if we knew what the incidences were, maybe we wouldn't care about this. You know, if we could, if we could ever see what those were. And I don't know how it's done, but I, we've been asking for it, so I just would like to find some way to see it.
Yeah.
But I'm going to put the other thing, the process for selecting books, class, class sets of books into teaching and learning, so we can see how that's done. I'm good.
You're good?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No? Okay. Mrs. Perkins?
Thanks. Just to piggyback, I, I have a bunch of comments and questions, but to piggyback on what you guys were talking about, I, I think that, you know, it's also linked to the comments where students say that they're, they're not really comfortable with how their peers are interacting either, when we're seeing stealing, fighting, teasing, punching. The groups of students teasing one child, that was very concerning to me because, I mean, that's when you start to feel like everybody's against you. And I mean, that really matters when you go to school. So I'm feeling like that's related to the hitting, so I don't want to, while I understand, you know, there might be roughhousing, I feel like it's related in that maybe those incidents aren't getting reported because students are feeling like everyone's against them and they're, they're experiencing this, but they're not able to kind of, so I feel like that, when I first read the data before this meeting, the things that kind of came to my mind were, I think, as Superintendent Perkins said, you know, the student-to-student behaviors. um, you know, the student-to-student behaviors and, um, and things, students respecting one another, that type of stuff looks like something that we really should be making a priority. And I don't know if there's any kind of programs that we can be bringing. I mean, again, I know it's a moment in time, it's hard to do that, but if this is kind of universal and it's across the state, maybe there's some programs we could be doing that we're not.
Yeah, and I think, um, like the Sandy Hook stuff that Mrs. Papil just talked about, like the See Something, Say Something that she mentioned in her program improvement plan. You know, those, though, there's three programs, See Something, Say Something, um, I think it's like Say Hello, or it's, it talks about just like going, you know, make, like going up to someone and sitting with them basically at, at, at lunch and, you know, just like making that effort. I do think that those programs that we're bringing in through a grant, we're, we're hopeful that those are some of the things that, you know, to, to address the kinds of things that you're saying. Because it is hard for a kid, a little one, to intervene. You know, if you see a whole bunch of, you know, some, these kids are picking on this one kid or whatever might be the case, to ask a 10 or 11 or a 12-year-old to intervene on that is asking a lot. But that doesn't mean that we don't teach them strategies to, you know, who do you go to? Who do you say something to? You know, and why is that important? You know, um, I think that those are the things that we need to, we need to work on, for sure.
Yeah, so that was, that was like the one straight, one striking thing that stood out. And another was, as you mentioned, just the amount of data that showed just how fantastic our teachers are handling all this. And, um, you know, again, probably with the increase in the difficult behavior and the students as a result from COVID, whatever the case may be, things are different after COVID. And the fact that a lot of the data is suggesting that teachers are still, um, doing great in the classroom for these kids. And the kids see it and feel it. It's just kudos to our teachers across the district and, you know, leadership and the, you know, guidance and nurses as well. But definitely, um, the teachers shined, I think, in this, uh, in this survey. So I think that, you know, giving them a, you know, an attaboy on that is fantastic job for that. I think, and the last thing that I saw going into this meeting before, just looking at the data without hearing, um, your, your presentation was stress. It seemed like, um, a couple of the questions where level of pressure is unhealthy, because I worry about grades, it's hard for me to enjoy school, there's a little bit of stress, it seemed like, that might have been a little high in some of those numbers. And just, you know, I see it in my own kids. And it's not even, you know, teacher-driven or grades-driven. It's just, there's a lot coming at them. There's a lot of juggling your, your activities and your homework. And, you know, it's, it's a lot in today's world. And, you know, the social media stuff, like, you know, trying to just navigate all that together. And maybe just, it might be a good opportunity to include some kind of stress programs or ways to alleviate stress, just if we could get that information to some, to kids somehow. That might be a really great thing. And then just a couple of other things that I was, as you were speaking, I kind of wrote down here. I, I kind of often hear that the way the questions are worded are difficult. The timing of this is difficult because it's after MCAS, it's at the end of the year. It's voluntary. Is there any chance we could tweak it and shorten it and give it our own survey at a different time of year to whatever grades we want? I mean, would that be better than just doing this over and over as a way to kind of find those areas that might be more informative to us?
Yeah, I mean, I think, um, you couldn't do it with this survey, per se, because this is from the state. We don't have to participate in it, we, we don't. But, you know, we would, I mean, we could certainly talk about that and look at that, you know, whether or not that's what we wanted to do is the district develops their own survey that we administer. Um, and we just tell the teachers not to, not to give them the vocal that are administering the test at the end. I mean, I clearly, you saw this 70-something percent of the state participates. So there are definitely districts that don't take the vocal survey.
Right. I think the data is super valuable. It's just, it seems like sometimes the wording of the question is difficult. And maybe you just want to ask something more specifically that might, you already know, kind of isn't an issue in our district, but you might want to drill down into some of these, maybe taking a year off from it and doing it again. Like I say, the timing after MCAS, everyone's wiped and, and done. Maybe, it, it might be a good idea if, if, you know, there's an appetite for it. And I think my last thing was, um, the, the books seeing themselves in their curriculum. I, that's a prolonged issue. And I think that, oh, do we know what other district scores are? And just wondering if we could find, you know, is that on the DESI website or anything? Maybe finding a district that's, you know, hitting this out of the park and?
I believe that it is going to be on the, um, website. Right now, it's, you can see, you can't see it by district. You can see it like, like as a state view. I, but I, it, I, I don't know if it will be public or if we'll just be able to see it. Yeah, I think, I think we will be able to see other districts.
I'm just wondering if there's maybe an opportunity to speak with some, you know, districts that might be doing really well on this and just what programs are you doing to, you know, make kids, their behavior toward each other, respect each other as students a little bit better?
Yeah, the commissioner did talk about that the other day, and I think he said that we'll be able to see it internally, but I don't, I don't think it will be publicly released. Yeah, yeah.
So just one thing to add, one, one shift that DESI is making is they're trying to make these results accessible to more stakeholders. So in the past, it used to just be district and building leadership could see the schools applicable to them. So a principal could see their school, so on and so forth. This year is the first year where they're actually expanding that. So theoretically, you know, Mr. Ahern at Broad Meadows could not only just see other middle schools, but also middle schools throughout the state as well. But that's, it's not publicly available. So you still need your ELAR account as a public school educator to be able to get access to that. But, you know, Dr. Perkins and I and our team would also be able to look at, um, other districts as well and, and other schools.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah.
My only question is, we're not supposed to, we're not supposed to look at the data from before and compare it to now, but if we looking at the data to take actionable steps, isn't it too, so if we're looking at things in fourth grade, and we're not supposed to compare four and four, but if we're taking steps along the way, once they hit, let's say, eighth grade, we should be seeing, if we're doing the right things, some improvement, right? And in our own data that we've had, have collected over the past three years, have we looked at any of that to see if there's any improvement? Again, from fourth grade, let's say, to the eighth grade responses? Does that make sense?
No, it does.
Because we can't go make changes, actionable steps for fourth grade and see changes in the fourth grade because they haven't gotten there yet.
Right.
So we have to be looking forward.
So the only, so what we're supposed to look for is trends in the data, um, like we talked about, not necessarily comparing like individual responses.
Right.
Because the problem is that the survey is different, which also, so not only are the kids sometimes, you know, if you're looking like grade to grade or whatever, kids are different, but the actual questions that the kids see are different. Some are the same, you know, between maybe like fourth and fifth sometime, they ask, you know, pretty similar questions, but the eighth grade questions are definitely different than the fourth grade. So, um, that makes it challenging that it's different questions depending on the grade level. So, um, you know, but, but we definitely, I would, what I would say is like to Mr. Gutrot's point earlier, we do look for trends and to Ms. Lebo's point, you know, one of the things that we absolutely have been talking about is why is that number in terms of the, you know, we have new curriculum material. We, Ms. Lebo mentioned the CK LA, all of these different, um, things that, you know, that we've brought in. And still, that number is lower than what we've, what we would like to see. So why is that? You know, so we do look for, and that, for those trends, and you can see that is not just, you know, uh, lower in fourth, but it's also, I think it's also an eighth, maybe, that question. So we do look for like commonalities and things like that.
But it doesn't make sense, right? If they're asking, if they're asking us to get this data to see where we have strengths and weaknesses, and then we, we're not supposed to be looking at the weaknesses because it, you know what I mean? Yeah, it's a trend, but what are we doing to address the, the weaknesses that we're supposed to be able to see if the trends are changing? You know, I don't know. In terms of comparing them to the past, to see what we've been doing and how we've been doing, if there's been any shift in trends. And then things about the books, um, and if we want to do like an informal, just, you know, have every teacher ask informally, hey, do you see yourself in, do you, do you see yourself in these books? You know, in the, in the content and the curriculum that we're teaching? Do you feel like you're represented here? In a way, that's not like it's an SAT question and they're trying to trick you. Or the way we try to vote is yes mean no, or does no mean yes? Like how we, you know, when we're voting on different resolutions and stuff like we did at the last meeting. But, um, anyway, you know, I just think, I think the vocal survey is important, but I also feel like the, the way the questions are asked for kids sometimes maybe aren't digestible for a fourth grader or an eighth grader in ways that their answers, you know, are always mostly true. Because if you have an always mostly true at 40 or 50% that someone's getting hit every day, we're having, we're having people, hitting people every day, all day long in class or in school, you know? So I don't know. I, I just think it's an interesting survey that I, I don't have 100% confidence in myself.
I might add on that, on the book question. I, I've always thought it was a terrible question. Uh, and now, it's, the way that it's worded is so confusing because, I mean, there's three different options in one question. So to a child in fourth grade, and a lot of fourth graders that are extremely literal, and you ask them a question that has three parts, they're going to answer one, wait a minute, what about the other two? Well, wait a minute, I see myself in this book because of my demographic, but, oh, this one doesn't have the same job that my, you know, my parents have, and this one doesn't have a dog in it, and I have a dog. So, I mean, it's like, they're going to answer it for them, and it's going to be all encompassing. And that's the way a lot of fourth graders are that I, that I know. And, um, so I just don't think it's a fair question. I think they're gonna, they're gonna answer it about themselves and you can't have a book that's just them. It's not going to be just them.
Yeah.
My two cents.
Yeah.
Okay. All set? Thank you. Okay, thank you all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have superintendent's evaluation. In our packets tonight, we received a summative evaluation form for Superintendent Mulvey populated with the superintendent and district improvement plan, plan goals for this past school year, 2023-24. Superintendent Mulvey presented a review of his progress towards his 2023-24 goals at the October 23rd meeting. School committee has also been provided with supporting materials from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on the superintendent evaluation process. A word document of the summative evaluation form has also been emailed to the school committee members. So if you prefer to submit it digitally to Mrs., um, Mrs., um. Owens, yeah, okay. You can do that, or you can, you can do a handwritten document and, and present it and bring it back to her by December 2nd. The individual evaluations, including comments, will be complied, compiled into a composite summative evaluation and to be reviewed on December 11th by the school committee at the school committee meeting. So do you have any questions, anyone, about that? Any que, yep.
Who compiles the, oh, you, okay.
Mrs. Owens. So if we do it electronically, it's easier for her to be able to take everything and, and put it into a document. And, um, if Mr. Bagoli wants to just write one by hand, you can, you can bring it in, um, by December 2nd. Not saying that you would, but just in case. Okay? All right, so that's great. That's that.
Did you say that December 2nd?
December 2nd, please, yes. And we'll review it on, at our meeting on December 11th. And, um, next on the agenda is the MASC convention resolutions update by Mrs. Hubley.
Thank you. So I'll give you a review. So, um, the resolution number one, um, there was a strike on, therefore, let it be resolved, MASC urges Massachusetts to enact a monitorium on the MCAS testing effective immediately. That was the only part of that that was stricken, that was voted by the membership to strike that part, and therefore then, um, the, the resolution was voted yes by a yes vote. I will say, um, just to go through, all of the votes were yes votes. There were none that were no votes. The majority of the conversation that was had was on parliamentary procedure and on amendments that did not pass. So I'm not even going to go through all the amendments that didn't pass. Most of them were, most of them were just, um, word changes, but nobody liked the word changes, so they didn't pass anyway. The other amendment, I, the other resolution that had an amendment was number seven. Um, I gave everybody a copy of what the changes were on it, and I did give this to Mr. Malaney. If you didn't, if you had enough time to, to review it for us. And, uh, they had said at the meeting that it strengthened the resolution, and everybody at the conference agreed after reading it, that was what they felt, but would love to have your opinion.
So basically, what they did was, they tried, what it does is, it goes back and tries to recapture the inflation adjustment that did not occur in the prior three years. And also, which would mean that chapter 70 funding would, would increase. Uh, and it also then provided an inflation adjustment for the more than 200 minimum aid districts, which we were. Our, our, uh, we went up $30 per student. So this will go up to $30.60. You know, but it, it, it does increase the amounts for the inflation adjustment. It doesn't really affect Quincy too much because we get so little chapter 70 funding, uh, under the current formula, anyway.
Thank you very much for reviewing that. Thank you. So as I said, that was, that one and resolution one were the only ones that had any changes that were voted on, and all the other resolutions were voted yes. That's it.
Thank you.
Next, we have pivotal response program for referral to special education subcommittee for presentation. Mrs. Lebo.
Just quickly, we heard that under the ABA work that we do with our students, there is a new child development type of approach. And, um, I, we didn't ever heard of it before, so we're hoping to get a presentation at the subcommittee meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. And, um, impact of technology on teaching and learning for referral to the teaching and learning subcommittee by Mr. Gutrot. Mr. Gutrot? Do you like to say anything?
I don't even know what it is, to be honest with you. What did I request? An impact of technology in teaching, so this is something that many meetings ago I asked that.
Yeah, you asked, I believe it the first October meeting.
Okay.
And so it needs to be formally reported to TJ.
Okay, and?
It was because of the IT, um, the information technology program. Was they very focused on software?
Yeah. Oh, understood. Yeah, you're refreshing my memory. Yeah, a month plus.
You still wanted to go into teaching and learning.
I still wanted to go into teaching and learning. Thank you.
You have to refresh my memory, too.
Okay. We're all set?
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Six weeks is like a lifetime.
Yeah. We'll try and get that on before six weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next, we have consent agenda, which we need a roll call vote for, so do we have to make a motion for that?
Motion to accept.
Motion by Doug, second by Mrs. Lebo. Any discussion?
On the motion.
On the motion.
I just think some of the trips that we're asking our kids to participate in are cost prohibitive to some of our kids, and one of these is $5,000. It's, I think we should put a limit on how much money they're going to ask kids to spend, and I just, that's my own personal thing.
It's in the budget Subcommittee? Equity, field trip equity is in the budget Subcommittee for discussion?
It's in the what?
It's in the budget Subcommittee.
Field trip equity, that came up last spring.
Do we...
We need a meeting on it.
Yeah, we'll get that on the agenda, and we can fully discuss it then. Okay.
So, on the same, on the same thing, even looking at the middle school field trips, their number of the percent of eighth grade is who Southwest thinks are going to participate compared to the percent of the number that Central thinks are going to participate, is a significant difference, and the price is similar. So I think he's right. I think we should look at the equity of the, I mean, you don't want to hold kids back from great experiences, but I don't know, it's a tricky question.
Yeah. Well, we can discuss it in depth at the meeting, all right? Let's just get that, so we can really kind of think it through. Okay, and so, anything else prior to the vote? We're all set? Roll call vote.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Perdiros?
Yes.
Mayor Koch? Thank you.
Okay. And communications, upcoming school committee meetings, regular meetings on December 11th, January 8th and 22nd, and February 12th, 2025, at 6:30 PM. Subcommittee meetings, we have teaching and learning, SIPs and PIPs on November 20th and 25th, December 4th, 9th, and 16th at 6:00 PM, and policy on November 2025 at 6:00 PM.